Call or meeting order, let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance and invocation please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you Lord this day, we come to you with a thankful heart this morning Lord. We've got a lot, got a lot to be grateful for Lord, and we just want to give you thanks and praise and glory. We just ask Lord to guide us through our meeting and that decisions we make will be most pleasing unto you. All the folks in our county, watch your oversight and guide us, lead us and direct us. We give you all the praise and glory for these blessings we ask in Jesus's name, amen. First order approval of the agenda, there's no changes. Hear a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor raise your right hand, four oh. Mr. Evans is not with us today, he had a prior arrangement there. I trust everyone's looked over the minutes from one four January. If so, do I hear a motion to accept?
Thank you.
Motion second and discussion, all in favor raise your hand, four oh. This time we'll open the meeting for public comment, anyone having anything to discuss, comment on, please come forward. There you go.
I'm here to bring some good news.
Welcome.
One of those, I hate to see things.
Thank you.
It's an odd test, I can read that.
That's what I was going to say, I'm sorry.
Looks like recycled paper, right?
You see on top of this paper it's called 2020 Small Business Marketing Initiative. Last year, which we're still in this pandemic, we had to find some way to help out our small businesses. Here not only in town but in the county as well. So when I filled in on the radio, which I work as fill in as needed, WI FM in Elkin. I worked with them to come up with a plan that small businesses could afford advertising, but be efficient and effective. Twenty-one businesses participated in that, and you see the whole list there, and it ranges from real estate to retail. Real estate, retail, restaurant, and service industry. And the goal was to promote the county and the town, but also their business as well. So in the fall promotion, that was the first one we did together, seventeen businesses participated in that. Each one had ten spots each, was a total of a hundred and seventy thirty-second ads. Those ran September twenty-third through October thirtieth, and they were very affordable. But each of those spots that ran had continuity to it, especially at the end of it. And at the end it always says, come and enjoy the best shopping and dining experience in the Blue Ridge Mountains, just in time for the fall leaf season. And it encouraged people to come, and they were very warm, inviting, and to get people here. And then the standard one, the Christmas greetings, thirteen businesses participated in that, and they all bought forty spots each, five hundred and twenty spots. Now those were fifteen-second ads. Now you're looking at all of this together, it was a total of six hundred and ninety paid ads on WI FM radio in Elkin. Reason why we wanted the Yakon Valley is because it's within minutes driving distance to get people here to spend money, and they may even spend the night. But it's to get them here and to spend and help our local businesses, because it's been a really tough year. Twenty twenty, which is twenty-one now, is just an extended version. But get them here and spend some money, help them out. And if you throw in a hundred bonus spots, maybe a few more, you're looking at eight hundred times, eight hundred spots that ran in two months on the radio. On the fall promotion, I know of five different instances where they, and it was all random, from different people. That they came and people mentioned, they couldn't remember the business name, but they remember hearing Sparta on the radio. So they wanted to come check it out, and they spent money. And I know of two instances from the Christmas greetings ones as well, so. Out of all this, it was very successful, and we have plans to do that again this year. And one of the plans is to put the county and the town and all the communities in front of seven hundred thousand listeners in one week. So it's something I'm working on, but you're probably wondering why there's a zero on the back. That's how much it cost the taxpayers, and that's how much financial gain I got out of it. Doing just to work together as a community, and the more we work together, the more successful we're going to be. And we have bigger and better plans for this year as well, so we'll see what happens.
Really a good show of unity, everybody worked together, and that's impressive numbers. Y'all have done a good job.
It's, it's nothing that I did, I like to tell, we work together as a team, and when we all work together, we can do really big things. And this is just a good example right here of that. But this year we're going to do a whole lot more, and to get the county out, because the more people we get here, the more money we all can make, and more successful we'll be.
That's a good, good approach, good job, sure is. But have any questions?
One question, what was the difference between your radio campaign and the other campaign that we were briefed on last, last meeting?
I don't know exactly what they did, this is something as business owners that took up the initiative to promote on this. They spent their money, so it didn't cost anybody else, they funded it straight out of their own budget, or their wallet. But this one, these ads, the reason why there's fifteen and thirty-second ads and not very lengthy ones. Anything over thirty seconds is a waste of time, it's a waste of time, it's a waste of money, it's a waste of resources. There's an exceptions to the rule, but typically what we're trying to do, thirty seconds or less is ideal. And the reason for that is you want frequency, you don't want length, because you want two people to hear it versus one person to hear it. And with the feedback we got from these two different campaigns, it was, it was, I call it a home run.
It's a good reflection too, when we get our sales tax report every month, and it keeps creeping up, so that means things are working, that's what's taking place, you know. Sales tax indicator is a great, great indicator of what's taking place.
And some of the things too, working with, you know, want to do for this coming year, especially in the spring, is to get another campaign going once again. We'll figure that one out as time comes, but also I've located a couple of places where we could have some billboards, or a billboard in a great visibility place. That, and then go on into the summer, but I think we've knocked a good home run on this one, it was very successful.
That covers, reach over Wilkes County and the surrounding?
WI FM does the entire Yakon Valley, and even into the mountains, Ash, Allegheny, and parts of Watauga. It does Wilkes, Surrey, part of Stokes, Yadkin, Davie County, on down into Alexander. So it covers a wide range, and they have a very good following, very good following. So that's the reason why I highly suggest, not only because I fill in part-time, I didn't get anything, the only, I ever got zero financial gain out of it. Then what we did is typically the commission they pay, the salesperson, we took that and applied it to some spots for my light show. So I still ended up with a big goose egg.
Sounds good.
Thank you for volunteering your time in doing this. He said, how, how many listeners per week, seven hundred?
Now, this, not this one, the plan that I'm working on now, the seven hundred thousand in a week. Back in the Christmas season, I don't know how many of you listen to twenty-nine point five WMAG. During their Christmas music season, they have seven hundred thousand listeners a week. And I did, I got two Christmas packages, what they call, worked out a partnership with them for the light show, and it was highly successful. I'm estimating we had seventy thousand people come through Phelps Park in forty-five days. So it was, it was highly successful, I mean, and the feedback I'm getting, and I know where their greatest listeners are at, from the Martinsville, Virginia area, we had quite a few. Greensboro, so the Triad, we, I hammered pretty hard, and I saw great results from it. And that's why I highly recommend, that's the plan I'm working on for this coming year.
Have any further questions? And we certainly appreciate what you're doing buddy.
Happy New Year, told you it's great news today, right?
It's great news, it is good news, certainly is, we appreciate what you're doing. Moving on down to presentations, we'll earthquake update.
Good morning.
Morning.
So I'm, I'm going to start by saying that we haven't had any aftershocks lately, which is, which is great news. I know there's been some reports out in the community of loud noises and bangs and things, but I haven't seen an actual report of an aftershock in quite some time now. I think that's, that's wonderful news, and that's where I want to start my presentation. I'm going to be a little all over the place, but I didn't want to mention the fairgrounds and the sewer project that we've had going on out there. You know, we talked about that a little while back, about we were doing that project to support the temporary housing, and for that to be for the community in the future. That project is done, and I don't know if you all have seen it or not, but it looks wonderful. They've, they've put a lot of gravel down out there, they've done a lot of really good work, and not only do we now have a very serviceable facility there, but we also, aesthetically, it looks really good. The guys did great. So there was one caveat to that, or I'm going to call it that, but towards the end of the project, they had some money set aside in case they hit some stone out there, when they were digging, they hit bedrock. And they didn't need that, so they reverted that money back to the state, but the state still kind of wanted to use it. Their idea was to add more gravel to the needed areas out there, but because it was one of those situations, that it was sort of outside the scope of earthquake. Their, their idea was to basically loan it to us for us to pay it back over some period of time. That arrangement was presented to both the county and the town, and I think it's my understanding that those two, the county and the town worked together to split that cost over the course of a couple of years. Haven't seen an official document for that yet. It looks like, I think the, that extra cost of gravel was about twelve thousand dollars, split between each of us six thousand dollars per entity, three thousand dollars a year. Seems like a no-brainer to me too. Seems like a no-brainer to me, too, but, so that's where we're at with that. Now, as far as the usage of the campers, uh, I do still just have two folks in campers. I anticipate that to go up shortly. I think we're getting ready to start doing some demolition work. Uh, the state has prepared that bid package to go out, and we're going to push that out to local contractors and to whoever, uh, you know, to see about doing that demolition work here. So once that starts to take place, I expect we'll see some more folks needing temporary housing. All five of the campers that the county purchased are here now. I went and picked up the last one last week. It's a big one. Uh, we got one large one in case someone had several children. They're all here, and the state's also going to be purchasing one for Dana to stay in. And so he's going to be right out there staying right next to the rest of them, so. And speaking of Mr. Phillips, I actually have a meeting with him tomorrow. Uh, he wanted to come in and speak to us in regards to permits and timeframes and things of that nature, and then, of course, we'll have some other, excuse me, some other things to mention to him. He did present us, uh, some data, and I think you folks may have seen some of this, but for the last quarter, uh, they claimed, they said they had a hundred and twenty-seven active cases that they had reviewed, and fifty of them have received payment. So fifty of them receiving payment, from what Dana says, is fifty of them checked the box, done. Now, most of those were all smaller ones, but they're still just as important, so, uh, they've either spent or encumbered right around six million dollars of that twenty-four million. So they're working hard, and the reviews that I've heard from the community is that Dana and, and Richard have done a knockout job, and, uh, have been well-received here, and they're really trying to look after the folks of our county, and I appreciate what they're doing. So with that, I will open it up to questions, which I would prefer to answer questions than give the speech anyway, so.
I don't know exactly how many people will have to have, uh, their house rebuilt, repaired, or totally rebuilt. Was, you know, if you looked at material prices for building six months ago, they were here. If you look at them now, they're here. Has that had an effect on any of the people that have applied for money, that may have applied at a price that was lower?
I'm sure it has. Uh, I'm getting ready to start building a house myself, so I understand completely what you're saying. Material prices have went up, but I haven't been told of anyone specifically that has had any problem because material costs are higher. We know they are. Uh, I think we'll probably see more of that once we get into actually the, the cost of lumber. I think to this point, most of what we've been doing is masonry and masonry repair, and I think that material has not been affected in the same way that lumber has. So I think we'll probably see some of that, you know, when they start actually tearing down walls.
That will, will that be taken care of with the twenty-five million?
It should be, yeah. It should all still come out of the same thing.
Many people you predict will be using the campers that's displaced, you think? Just a guess, I guess.
And families, I, I guess. Uh, some of that is sort of up in the air because, you know, we might get into a house and say, "Well, it was thirty percent damaged," but then get in there and it's much worse. And people may even still be living in these houses, you know? To actually fix them, they need to get out for a few days. Maybe it's, we need to get out to tear it down, maybe it's they just need to get out so they can kind of, I won't say it this way, but kind of be out of the way of the construction guys so they can come, you know, tear it out and fix it back.
Or live in the same house and work there.
Yeah, it is. I mean, it, it could be someone staying in a camper for two weeks, it could be there there for six months, you know?
The project of campers, that's a, that's needed. Any questions?
Uh, I just want more. Uh, what happened with the second home, people that had second homes? Originally, they were not counted? Has there been any change in that? And what about people that had outbuildings separate from the house?
I'll give you the government answer, it depends. Um, so your primary home, of course, is covered, your secondary, it depended on where you, where your primary home was at. So if your primary home was in Allegheny County, and you also owned a second home in Allegheny County, there was some portion that would be eligible. I don't know that exact number, and I think it was kind of subject to some interpretation. But if your primary home was in the state of North Carolina, then it was a little less. And if your primary home was outside North Carolina, then there was no assistance, because they, it's North Carolina taxpayer money, not federal money.
About outbuildings, if you're in Allegheny?
At this point, outbuildings are not livable structures, so they're not covering them, is my understanding. Maybe, I'm not saying there might not be some exception to that, but as a general rule, outbuildings, roads, driveways, and that sort of thing, they're, they're not, they're not covering that.
Relating to what you said about the two gentleman in the state, I've heard some good comments, that they're really, really trying to help people accomplish their goal.
And they've really been good to communicate with my office, too. They haven't, they, they're not trying to steal the show and do all this stuff on their own, I mean, they're, they're involved in the community, so.
Further question, Dana, we appreciate everything, but sure we do. Next up is App Health for Green. Morning.
For having me, and, um, I'll go ahead and say Catherine and April from Allegheny Health send their regards. They had a conflict today, but, um, they got to review everything I'm going to share with you, and just want to reiterate their partnership with us. Um, so, um, good morning, and, um, I'll just say, I've, I've focused comments today around vaccine, because I'm thinking that's what you're most interested in, but I guess before I get to that, I'll just say we are still, uh, considered a red county, meaning there is pretty significant transmission of COVID-19 in the community, so I, uh, want to make sure before I leave to remind everyone about the three W's and that the virus is spreading, um, as we try to get to the other side with vaccine. Uh, it's still important that we are very careful. So, um, thank you for running the slides, uh, for me. Uh, so if you look, uh, last week, um, the state actually decided, you can go to the next slide now, thank you. There was an update to the state's plan, I'm sure you all have heard about that. Um, this is just a graphic, and you probably can't read it really carefully, but the main thing that changed was healthcare workers', uh, definition got broadened, so anyone who is doing direct patient care as a healthcare worker is now in phase one. Um, and long-term care staff and residents have been in that group, and I'll just tell you all what we did, we got a list of all the facilities in the area that had been enrolled, uh, or not enrolled in the federal program with CVS and Walgreens. Um, so all of the places that were not enrolled, we have gone to see them, and it's basically group homes. Um, so, uh, we've covered everyone who wants a vaccine with their first dose, and we'll be planning to go back to do second doses. Uh, so the main shift is that, and then, of course, older adults, you all remember, we had seventy-five and older previous, and now it's sixty-five and older, regardless of any condition. So we have quickly tried to shift, um, and really what we want you to know is that trying to work through each group, um, as we go, that's what we've been instructed to do. The state will continue to try to move us along as a state, I believe, so we will be working on, uh, the groups in one and two. Uh, most of group one is probably already done, I don't expect we have many more even with the shift. I think, um, older adults is going to be our biggest focus right now. Um, and then we'll be moving on beyond that to frontline essential workers. That's one we've continued to get a lot of questions about, and I'll just tell you, we are waiting for more information from the department about what they mean by essential workers. Um, there is a lot of essential workers in our, uh, community, um, but we have to follow the way that they define it. So more to come on that, I wish I could tell you more. The one group I can tell you I know for sure will be in that, or schoolteachers, police, fire, um, people in emergency response, uh, of course, will be in that. Uh, but there are some other, uh, folks that we are still waiting on some more definitions from the state, and, um, hopefully we'll get that soon. Um, if you, uh, look further down, uh, the next group after essential workers are adults at high risk, and that's really people who are sixteen to sixty-four, so they don't fall into another group, and they have high risk of severe illness because they've got a chronic condition like COPD or diabetes or something like that. So, um, again, we're going to be working through the other groups first, and then we'll move into that. Uh, and then everyone else will come after that. If you want to go to the next slide. So the way that we're managing this is using a vaccine interest form. We know that not everyone has internet or will want to go to a computer, so I wanted to make sure you all knew, we continue to have, uh, staff who are answering phone calls seven days a week, with the intent that, you know, if you don't want to go to our website and sign up, fine, uh, we welcome you to call us, and we will sign you up that way. Um, but that way, we can go ahead and get your information, and, um, as the phases change, we can reach out to you to say, "Okay, now we're ready to schedule you an appointment." And the reason we're doing that, um, I'll tell you a story I've said many times in the last week. My eighty-year-old aunt lives in North Carolina, and she stood in line for four hours. She has like three chronic conditions, uh, and I just think that is really awful to think about people standing in line. Uh, we've also heard of, uh, clinics that have been operated, um, and people run out of vaccine before you get to the end. It seems awful to stand in line for four hours, it seems even worse to stand in line and then be told that you're out of vaccine. So we're trying to use this method so that we can give good service to our public by, um, you know, giving them an appointment time, making sure that we plan our vaccines appropriately, um, and, uh, we make sure everyone who comes for a vaccine appointment has got a vaccine, and we're not going to run out. So, um, that's how we're approaching it right now. You don't have to be in the current phase to sign up, so you can call us or go to the website, uh, and sign up, and we're happy to take your information now, and we'll be reaching back out. Just a reminder, our, our COVID call center is open seven days a week. Uh, we are experiencing very high call volumes, so just want to say, I mean, they're taking, I think they took a thousand calls one day last week. Um, you may have, uh, people say, "We can't leave a message," and it's because it's rolling over and we're getting, uh, more people calling than we can, uh, get everything, uh, responded to quick enough. So we've added more staff, uh, to our call center, and we're looking today at some other options for our phone system, just so that we try to get people to a person as easily as we can, but I do ask for people, uh, to just be patient, because we are certainly trying to make sure that people get a call back if they've left a message with us. Um, okay, if you want to go to the next slide, uh, wanted to talk to you a little bit about our plans for distribution. Um, one thing that's really challenging is, uh, right now, there are, uh, weekly allocations of vaccine. We don't get to order the number of vaccines that we distribute. The federal government decides how much the state gets, and then the state has to divide that into three sections. Uh, part of that goes to the federal program that you've heard about with long-term care, with CVS and Walgreens, so while they're working through first and second doses, a portion of North Carolina's vaccine allotment will go to that program. The other two groups that are getting vaccines are, uh, health departments and hospitals right now. And so, um, really, we find out Thursday night, usually around ten o'clock, what we're going to get the next week. Uh, so it makes it pretty challenging for us to plan. Um, we know last week, uh, our first, uh, initial allocation allotment that they were set to give us was zero first doses for this week, and we had appointments scheduled. Um, I want to tell you all, I talked to Senator Ballard, uh, Friday night at home, and, um, she has, uh, certainly advocated for our regions. I wanted to make sure you all know, um, that we are going to get two hundred first doses in Allegheny County this week, and I believe some of that is due to her advocacy, so just want to make sure you all know that. Um, one of the challenges also is every shot that we put in someone's arm, um, has to be entered into a special database, and that database is something, um, that the state is using to tell CDC how many doses have been given. It, it's not the most, um, user-friendly. Uh, we've had a lot of issues with getting people access to the system. You have to have, uh, what's called an NCID to be able to get to, uh, get an access, and then once you do that, you have to wait for the state to give you access to the system. So there's been some hiccups, um, across the state, and I don't think that's a secret, um, although we're working really hard to make sure we can shift, um, enough people to do data entry, because every person who gets a shot, we have to enter within a certain number of hours after they get it, um, into that system. I think, you know, really a couple of days, they really want us to have it real time. Allegheny has been the place we've been waiting, uh, I think nearly, uh, two weeks to try to get more people sign on access. Um, on Thursday, we got some more access, so I'm hoping that you'll get to see, if you go to the state's dashboard, you'll notice it looks way off. Um, so I brought some numbers, because I wanted to tell you how many vaccines that were actually given. Um, as of last week, we had received six hundred Moderna vaccines, and we had given four hundred and seventy. Uh, as of today, we will finish off all of that six hundred. Um, we'll be done with that, that shipment. Uh, when we get the two hundred more this week, uh, we expect to be running through that with other appointments, um, that over Wednesday and Friday. Um, and then we are planning right now to work with the senior center this Friday to do a clinic there, uh, with Karen's help, uh, to try to have some more people vaccinated on Friday. Um, I've been wanting to try to plan a big mass clinic here, and, uh, thank you Commissioner Osborne for the offer of the county building, and I know, um, Andy has gone and looked around at some things, so we're really interested in doing that with a lot of volunteer help, and, um, one of the challenges is that we are really supposed to empty our tank every week, so what we're trying to do is make sure we have enough for everyone who's already got an appointment. We don't want to cancel any appointments on folks, and we certainly don't want to have the scenario I mentioned earlier where we have people come and we run out of vaccine. So expect to get this extra two hundred, but we've also been in, uh, discussions with Allegheny Health, and it looks like they're going to ask for the state's permission to transfer another three hundred doses to us. So that will help us plan, um, to get more out, uh, and I wish I had more details for you, but that's the timeline we're working on, is Thursday night, and we might get vaccine on Tuesday, or it may not come until Wednesday, and we have to keep rolling with, uh, the numbers we've got. So I hope that will get better, um, but right now, our plan is to start with the senior center and then, uh, plan a community, uh, vaccination clinic. Okay, um, one other thing I wanted to mention, vaccine is free to anyone, there's no charge, doesn't matter if you have health insurance or not, um, it's part of, uh, the federal government provides it, so we cannot charge, uh, for anyone to get a vaccine. Okay. Um, volunteers are something that we're interested in, so if, if folks have clinical experience, that's great, but they don't have to. We do have a link on our website where you can sign up to volunteer. Every volunteer that works with us, uh, will get a vaccine. Uh, we believe that that is important, uh, and it's part of the state guidelines that we can allow for people to get vaccinated if they volunteer with us, uh, to help distribute vaccine. So, um, we have a volunteer coordinator that we've shifted from another job, um, to help us coordinate, um, with these clinics and know that, um, we've got different roles for people to play. You can be a greeter, you can make sure that people are signed up on an appointment list, um, you can watch people after they get their vaccine, you don't have to have clinical experience. Okay, you can go to the next slide. Um, and I guess the last thing I'll just mention again is that we still have very limited supplies, uh, but I do want to make sure you know, this, the feds are, as they ship the first doses, they're holding back second doses, and so we're, this week, we're getting our first shipment of second doses. So while we're working to try to get first doses out, you know, people who are first time getting their first vaccine, everyone who got their vaccine before Christmas will be coming due for their second dose, and we'll be working to try to get them vaccinated on time. Um, so, um, that, our biggest challenge right now is vaccine supplies and just building another piece of in, infrastructure to have a good appointment system for people, um, and, uh, quick, you know, emptying of every week's allocation. So we're working on that, um, as hard as we can go. Um, I think that might be my last slide, I'm not sure. Yeah, thank you. Know if you have questions, but I'm happy to answer them.
Out of your requested, out of your requested doses, what percentage actually do you receive back?
You can't request, the state decides. So the, one of the things they look at is this database system to see how many doses does it have recorded, um, before they will give you more. So you can imagine, if you don't have, if the data system won't let you in for you to enter it, then there's problems, right? So I want you all to know, I've, we have risen up all of our concerns, um, we've put in support tickets, and we even talked to one of the developers of- support tickets and we even talked to one of the developers of the system last week, one of the project leads at DHHS, to try to fix our problems. Some of it is, are things like, if you have a person who's doing nothing but data entry and they're working in multiple counties, they have to have three separate IDs and then there's error codes. So when you go in to enter, you know, Bill got his first shot, it will kick it back out. Or maybe Bill has an email and his wife is on the same email, it will kick it back. So there's a lot of like those types of issues that have created, I think, why North Carolina is ranked so low. It's very much tied to the data. It's not, I mean, I'm talking to colleagues every day, it is not that we are not putting shots in arms, it is very much the data and the reporting that's the problem, but we're working on it.
What can this board do to progress this along? Is anything a county can do, the commissioners or anything to move?
Well, I think if we continue to have hurdles, we may need you to help advocate for us and I will tell you, we put in a request last week to shift some of the state contract folks that have been doing contact tracing for us. I have to, I had to get approval to allow the people already assigned to us to work on vaccine, but I think we jumped through that hurdle, so I'm pretty sure we're ready to have them working on vaccine data entry. I've got to get them access into the system and so we're working on that. I also, for those of you, you know, Samaritan's Purse has a home office in Boone. I talked with them yesterday and last week and they've offered to give us some staff to help with data entry as well. So we're working to try to get them access to the system so that they can help us as soon as we get out shots to get more people, you know, documented in the system. So it's going to take a huge team of people to keep the data up to date. I think that's going to be where we are probably going to need help long-term, but I, you know, if we have a good system to get people in the database, we'll be able to manage that. And I think patience, you know, we're working very hard. I know people are frustrated when they can't get through to us, but we are being inundated. I've talked to several of my colleagues who, their whole county phone system went down the day that they announced 65 and older. So it's, it's just, there's a lot of demand, which is really good and we've got to try to, you know, do what we can to stand up and get people through as quickly as possible.
I've got several, several different questions, but what concerns me, the state of North Carolina has known that these vaccines were going to roll out, you know, in December or January or whatever. And for them to be as ill-prepared as they are to get vaccines in different counties is really disturbing. Not the health department, it's not Allegheny, it's not ASH, it's not Watauga. It's out these numbers of vaccines that we can minister, administer to these people. That comes from the federal government to the state. Do you have any idea how many doses the state of North Carolina has received? Allegheny County, we're roughly 11,000 people. And if you look at some of your numbers, you know, maybe by the end of this week, we may have had 800 for 11,000 people. Now, I know the health department and they're working 24/7 to try to get these shots to people, to put these shots in their arm. You're not, not moving fast enough because you don't have the vaccine.
Yeah.
Now, with the vaccine, you have to have the paperwork, the computer work to go along with the vaccine. That's very disturbing to me. I think it's a poor situation that comes out of Raleigh that can't do a better job of protecting the people of the state of North Carolina.
You asked me about how many doses and I believe last week, they got 120,000. So I will just add, I think one of the things that needs to happen is there needs to be some planning at the federal level so that there is some, really, I mean, if they don't find out until Tuesday what they're getting, which is what they're telling us, and then they have to turn it around to us by Thursday, I mean, there's definitely some blame to share, but I would say that's really problematic too. There needs to be some better planning so that we know, okay, in this month, we think we're going to be able to get you this many because that is what's really hard for us to plan. If we try to do a big clinic, we literally, we're finding out at 10 o'clock, I'm watching my phone from 5 to, you know, till I go to bed, to see what's our, what's our number going to be and we find out that moment. And so we risk overbooking and then having to say, okay, wait, we don't have enough to cover or we don't have enough people booked and then we have to rush to try to do that. So it's, anyway, I think it could get better.
Well, I think that, you know, I'm not in the blame game.
Sure.
I'm not trying to blame, I think it's just poor planning. They've had umpteen times get this program up and running. Now, I mean, my other questions are, you go to the hospital for emergency room or a checkup or something, why doesn't the hospital administer a COVID shot to that patient? As you say, you need people that can give a shot, you need people that can work a computer, the hospital already has that. And I know several people that have been to the hospital lately, they've not even been offered a COVID shot. So I'm just looking at different resources that could be giving the shots. You're in desperate need of volunteers to help give shots. Hospitals already has all these people employed. Now, it's one question, I'll give you a few others.
Do you want me to answer that or hold that?
Go ahead.
Well, I can just say, they have offered to help us volunteer with a clinic, so perhaps we'll have some staff on Friday, but one of the things we have to remember is that they also have more people coming into the hospital who are sick because we have more spread in the community and more spread means more people who, you know, seriously ill that need hospital-level care. So they also have a strain, just like we have a strain with contact tracing and all of that. Thankfully, we had a separate team set up to do that from our nurses, but I think that's one of the reasons. I don't want to speak for them, but I think that's one of the things that's hard for them. And then the other thing is that you cannot give a shot to someone who is sick. They have to feel well and be out of their isolation period before they can get a vaccine. Okay, sorry.
When people go in for a
Wellness.
A routine checkup or something with x-rays or something along that line, those shots could be given. Anyways, now you said you're receiving about 1,000 phone calls a week.
No, we, we are getting, and then this is across the district, but I think last year, between March and middle of December, we had taken 26,000 calls. So things had sort of tapered off, but we're getting, you know, anywhere from 700 to 1,000 calls a day that come in. That's on top of the calls that we have to make going out.
And plus, you get emails on top of that.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything that the commissioners can do to help you with these phone calls? Is it, could a part-time person be employed? Is, I want to be part of the solution. I don't want to continue being part of a problem. That, this is the biggest thing that's happened in this country in 100 years. And if, and if it takes us and the health department working together to get somebody, I don't know if it would help you, but I would certainly entertain something on, if there's some way we can help you to make the process any faster, is there anything we can do?
Well, I, I think it's important to know that our funding is so important to maintain and I, you know, I know we're not there yet, but it's important because we started with a very lean infrastructure before we got to this point. And you all have really responded and I appreciate that, you know, the county has supported us and that means a lot to us. We are using some additional federal dollars. We are expecting any day to hear of some additional support coming to us to help hire some more staff. We absolutely will need that, so I think staying in communication about what resources we might need moving forward because I know everyone's ready to get out of this, but this is going to be another marathon. It's like we're doing an ultra marathon. We did one in 2020, we're all over this, we want to get past it and it's going to take some time until we see vaccine supplies increase for us to get through it. But we do have some funds right now. We are looking at, you know, using our volunteer pool, so if you have people who want to volunteer, assigning people to us to work a vaccine clinic on a weekend, I mean, things like, you know, emergency medical staff to be ready if someone has a reaction, people to help with traffic control, things that you wouldn't think about that are very, very important. You don't have to have clinical training, but all of that is helpful, as well as use of facilities is helpful. And I think just staying in communication with us is also helpful.
How many people are on your waiting list right now for Allegheny County?
I did not check this morning, but I will say, last week, I looked on Friday and I think there was over 5,000 people on our list. I'll have to look because, I mean, it's rolling constantly, so across our district, we were up to like 18,000 people on our, our list last Friday. So I haven't looked over the weekend to, to tell you the truth, but I expect it to be higher than that.
Is the state or the federal government giving you any indication that the number of vaccines that they provide to you will increase as time goes on? If, if you're doing 600 doses the last two or three weeks, I don't know how long it would take to get Allegheny County covered. I mean, we're looking another year or year and a half at this pace.
Yeah, I think that today, there is an emergency call with hospitals and health departments with the governor and Dr. Cohen, so we will see what they say, but I, I do believe there is a plan to prepare all this infrastructure so that as the supply increases at the federal level, that we'll be ready to take it all and move it through. I do think one of the keys is going to be just the, you know, shots in arms. I mean, we can run through 200 people a day at the health department with our small little staff, working as hard as they can go, but the key is going to be, you know, that's, that's not putting the data entry on them, that's us centralizing that so they can put shots in arms and we can do that with another team of people. I think that is going to be the key, but we'll see what they say, perhaps we'll hear more.
Thank, thank you for everything you're doing and trying to do.
Thank you.
Got one more little question. You mentioned 200 vaccines coming in this week, is that just for Allegheny or is that to be split with?
It's just for Allegheny. We actually were set to get zero doses across our district, which I have to tell you, was Thursday night was sleepless night for me, but yeah, 200 doses. And then if the hospital transfers 300 more to us that they're not using, then we'll be, you know, what I'm trying to do is make sure everyone who's got an appointment, we don't have to call them and say, sorry, we have to move you up and that we are able to move through Friday with Karen's group at the senior center.
Have you lost any vaccines just for not being able to get people in or whatever the situation is?
No, we've, and actually, the hospital has transferred some to us that were set to expire within a certain amount of time, but no, we have not and we have to watch that very carefully.
Just a general comment, one of the things that's aggravating personally, New York, California, they are letting vaccines expire. We are not getting the allocation, you know, if they aren't going to give the vaccine, perhaps they can start to distribute it to those of us that are beginning to set up. With the, you answered a question that I was going to have where, are you losing any vaccines? And you are not. You have got people, you've got arms to put it in so whenever he gets there. Thank you for your, you and your staff for everything that you're doing. Don't call it a pandemic, I call it a damn-demic. I think it's a more apt expression, but, and we'll get out of this, but it's going to take cooperation of everyone. Thank you.
Your vaccine clinic, is it a drive-up clinic?
Doing a drive-up clinic right now. I will say, we're trying to figure out logistics as to, you know, if we get to lots and lots of people, it might, and with the weather, it may make more sense to bring people indoors. We did a clinic in Watauga County on Saturday and everyone that worked it was tested before they worked it, so if we bring people indoors, that's probably what we would do again. But right now, at the health department, we're having the team go out to the car and we ask a lot of questions upfront so that we limit the amount of paperwork you have to do in the line. Yeah, so, and it's working pretty well. You still have to sit, sit in your car and park for a few minutes after you're done, but yeah, it's working well.
How is that affecting being able to get COVID tested? There's probably some overlap going on.
Yeah, that's a good question. So we made the decision to prioritize vaccines. We still test Mondays and Thursdays and we are testing people that, you know, we do encourage people to make an appointment, but we will test people even if they, you know, if they show up, we, we try to get everybody through that morning at 9:30 is when we do testing. But it does affect us, to do both is pretty hard, but we're trying to offer that so that we don't turn off testing. We know that's still an important service too and we offer that Mondays and Thursdays for the community.
Thanks for all you're doing.
Is the telephone number the best way for people to get an appointment?
If they call us, we'll put them on the vaccine interest list and then what that does is there's a timestamp, so we can see everyone who's 65 and older, when they actually were entered and we're trying to go in order so we can see whoever was, you know, completed that first. And I, I wanted to mention one more thing, for people who are homebound, you know, if we have people who just cannot get out, it, we are, you know, trying to work with the senior center, collecting that information and then we're going to have them in batches where we actually send our nurses to the homes to actually give shots. We have, you know, once you puncture a vial of Moderna vaccine, there's 10 doses and you have a certain number of hours before it goes bad, so we would want to group them together so that we use it all effectively.
I believe they certainly need to be able to go in home and accommodate some of those people that's
The, you, you gave us the number on one of your slides for the health department, a telephone number. I think that, you and I've had this discussion and the health department is working on it, but if you look in the, the new phone book, it's hard to find the health department's telephone number. So I would ask the county, if we could put on our website, maybe the Chamber of Commerce could put on their website, the actual phone number of the health department, you know, so people make, make it easier to find that number. And, and I know Jennifer's working on the, the listing in the phone book, but that'll, that'll be next year before that can really be changed, but.
You, you can call our main number, but the number on the slides is the COVID number specifically, so that's all they do is just answer COVID questions and help people with COVID issues.
Any further questions?
I will say that I signed up a elderly family member last Thursday online and it was very simple, straightforward, answered the questions, picked out an appointment time, which was actually 9:30 this morning. So it was a very easy way to do it, so.
Well, that's what we want. I won't, promise we won't have bumps in the road, but we're trying to make it easy for people. It's good to hear.
Probably easier than calling the number.
Yeah, that's right.
But I would like to point out that 24% of the population of Allegheny County doesn't have access to a computer. It includes smartphone.
There's a need for a telephone number by all means. Certainly appreciate what you guys are doing over at AppHealth, the vaccines out. I know you're working hard at it.
We'll keep them rolling. Let's just hope we get some more shots to put in arms soon.
County can do anything, please let us know.
We'll be glad to take New York and California, send it on over.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you all.
Next up, TDA. Uh, next up, TDA quarterly update. Mr. Mason.
Morning.
Got some information for you right there too. We'll go over there. Just wanted to run over, uh, some, some quick numbers there on the front sheet with you just real quick. And, uh, this is a report for the, the months of October, November and December of the second quarter. Um, the, the second quarter revenues, um, in current revenues, um, you can see there just, we took a transition in, uh, the prior to this first quarter this year and it, and it dipped. But what we've seen since then is a rise in those numbers and they, they continue to go up. Uh, and what you, what you see there is a difference that we would normally tracked versus previous years. So we, we're up $16,962. Uh, the, the current number that we've got in our long-range plan is currently now at $34,000, which we have been incrementally putting in $6,000 a year, but we went and put another additional $10,000 in because of the, uh, just the lack of the opportunities for us to give out grants at this time. So that, that just kind of addressed that. Now, when you go to exhibit A, um, and you look at, uh, the fund statement sheet, balance sheet, um, we still have a number in our audited balance at 15,275. Now that number will, will change once we get our audited numbers finalized, uh, but uh, I, I don't, I don't think it'll change drastically, but we'll see a, a trueing up of that number. Uh, but the revenues that we've taken in is 80,829 and then expense-wise so far, we spent $34,000. Currently we don't have any grant obligations that are outstanding right now, so that leaves that number at 61,000. Now, when you go down to those obligations of expenses, those are annual expenses that are still outlying. So that's what we're looking at, um, that we're still owed for the rest of the, the duration of, of this budget cycle. Uh, then, and that number comes down to $41,000 and then that's our long-range numbers that are just down below that, uh, which leaves us with a $7,400, but those funds that are just above it are set aside and we're continually to accrue funds on a monthly basis. Now, when you go and look just real quick on exhibit B, you can see the, uh, the revenue expense statement and those highlighted numbers are the, the numbers are corresponding with the, the each month, and I gave you a sheet on each month, uh, of what we've taken in and what we've expensed. Uh, so when we, our current revenue, uh, for the month of October was $21,035. For the month of November, uh, 17,311 and then in the month of December at 55,51. So those are cumulative numbers that get us to that $80,000 currently. And then on your second, uh, exhibit C is actually those months breakdown in regards to grants that we have administered, uh, with really the only grant we've had in the last three months is with, uh, Sparta Revisization Committee, and that was for $500. That's for historical preservation. The other two months, we don't have anything allocated out, so hence that's why we took the $10,000 and moved it to the long-range plan. Other than that, that's, uh, that's about the extent of, of the, the monetary side of it. Uh, we did have, uh, board members going off. Amy Lucas and John Kilmartin both came off the board. Um, uh, Amy was serving as secretary and John is vice chair. Uh, we had two new members come on, Bill Nilo and Charlie Scott. Um, and, uh, in the election of, of new officers to, to reshuffle that, Shirley Richardson is now the vice chair and Charlie Scott is sitting in the secretary capacity. Uh, and then the last thing that was on that sheet is just, uh, the TDA meetings our next quarter. Uh, we have scheduled meetings for January 14th, February 11th and March 11th. And those are at 8:30 at, at Allegheny Inn. Uh, now we did, uh, we would, would love to, to, if you would jot those down and if you've got the opportunity to come in and sit in one of those meetings, we'd love to have you there. And, uh, that way you can maybe get a little bit more flavoring of what's going on at those meetings. I do think that we will start seeing some movement in regards to, uh, activity and, uh, events, uh, but that probably won't happen until into the spring. So as we start planning for those, we're, we're starting to get our, the, the attention turned to assisting those people to start planning those, even with the fact that we're not sure exactly what's going to happen, that we start getting an idea what those might look like. Uh, any questions on, on either app?
Do I have any questions?
No questions.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good, informative, man. Purchase update. Any moxley please?
Okay, so the report I just handed you, um, it shows the day that I picked to compare the gas prices and the day, the reason I picked that day is, um, that's the day that we had the most vehicles fuel up on the same day. And it shows the gas prices of each, um, gas station that we filled up at. And then right beside of that shows the number of vehicles that filled up at that particular gas station. If you go on to the next column, that's just, um, we chose 20 gallons fill up just to show the difference in the cost at each gas station. And then the total day estimate is if we had 20 gallon fill-ups with the number of vehicles that filled up at each gas station, and that shows the estimate over there on the side too. Y'all have any questions?
Question, anybody?
Was, was there, I don't know if you talked to the department heads, but was there any reason that they bought fuel at the most expensive location?
I don't know that the department heads responded back as to why they did. I know that we've reached out and asked them to kind of monitor and make sure they're using the least expensive now.
Looking at roughly, I mean, you did a one-day comparison. $1.99 to 18, you know, it's 19 cents a gallon difference. That's a big difference to me personally. And I, I think that the, the people who purchase gas ought to look at it as their own money and taxpayers' money that are paying for these high prices that they're purchasing, uh, fuel at. I don't know, uh, don't know the reasons, you know, that they would do something like that. I know four brothers is out of town, couple miles. He'd ways virtually right here in town, close to, uh, Sparta Exxon. I, I mean, it's, you know, you look at one day, you look at the differences, there are that, 240 some days a year, that's a lot of money.
Right.
Has the, has the county ever had any working agreement arrangements with the state or the schools? Some of you guys have been here longer than I have, but have they ever had that working agreement with gasoline and fuels at, at any time?
Um, I don't think so, not, yeah, not that I know of.
Just to let the public know what we're talking about, in one day, if my figures are correct, one day, $597.20 was spent on fuel. Multiply that times 365 days. That would be a significant amount of savings, especially in this, in what we are in right now. So, uh, perhaps a county policy, we can't set up our own fuel distribution, but if we could come in on the state, uh, if we could save some right there.
I, I think we've worked with the department heads to try to get them to just be mindful of gas prices at different locations.
Now, use a little gas that's bought out of Allegheny when they're out in other counties.
Right. And I didn't, I didn't include any out-of-town gas just because if they're out, they can't help it.
They'll be ingracing doing business and.
Right.
So forth, but it's a, it's a concern. I mean, there's a lot of, I don't know what the total volume of gasoline bought per year in Allegheny County for all the county vehicles, but there's a lot of, I'm sure it's a whole lot. Go ahead.
Um, is it possible to look at several different days, like to spot check? Because I know that sometimes fuel deliveries can.
Can change the price.
Change the price.
Yeah.
So to be fair, can we, can we look at that?
We can.
Okay.
Any questions?
Just thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's something the finance committee ought to look into when you get started.
Thank you.
I also have something to pass out to the board.
Thank you.
What I've passed out is just our monthly finance snapshot that we've been doing to the board. Um, also from suggestions from the last meeting that I was out and did the last, um, report. Um, I've added a couple of things to it. Um, year-to-date revenue, $9,139,036.40. That's about 54.3% of the budget that's come in. Expenditures, $9,162,362.29. That's about 54 and a half percent of the budget that has been expended. And of course, their approved budget was $16,823,75. Um, and that's just a time, that's six and a half months, uh, calculated at 54.2% is kind of where we're at time-wise in the budget. So any questions about the first part? Okay. Uh, bank balance as of yesterday, $9,828.87. Bank balance as compared to last year at the end of January was $6,978,888.87. And our unaudited fund balance, $3,341,143.37. And that's 19.9% of our total budget. Where we stand currently. Can I answer any questions?
I've got a question, much as a comment. I think if you, again, look at the, uh, unaudited fund balance, thirty-plus million dollars, that's, that's a big number. It's better than it has been in a long time. It roughly grows each month. It may drop a little one month, but pick up the next month. Uh, the bank balance, uh, for this time of years, it looks excellent, but I think that the fund balance is a big number that people ought to key on.
Yes. And we are, we do have the third person hired in the finance office now, so we are starting to chip away at some of the things that we were behind on. Uh, but I will say as we chip away at some of that, we're, we're having discoveries and, uh, some abnormalities and things that we're having to go back and correct and maybe even start some of those processes over. Uh, but that, that process is helping Sydney and I both learn.
When will the audit start really? When, can we see some numbers?
Hopefully in a couple of weeks. Uh, we are still, um, transmitting a lot of that information electronically. Uh, auditors were supposed to be here today. They're actually going to come Monday and they're going to be here for a few days next week. But they have a lot of our information already. Um, they will be sending Sydney and I, uh, some things to have ready for them Monday morning. Uh, we'll have it stacked up for them, for them to go through it. Uh, they'll go through just day-to-day compliance with us and then the board should see the audit very soon.
Thank you.
Welcome.
That's a good between next statements this year and last year, $3 million, almost $3 million bucks. That's.
And I don't remember which commissioner asked, but one, I was in front of them before, asked a snapshot from the last couple of months. So that's the way I'm going to do the, the monthly report from here forward, so you can kind of see what the trend is.
Then, if I should go ahead or anything?
I don't have anything else right now.
I think it's a reflection of the county manager. I mean, you, whenever we start to talking about spending money, you look over there, he's got a look on his face like a, he's harder than the lips on a redheaded woodpecker whenever he comes to us spending money. So he's got his hand across the throttle and, uh, every now and then he chokes the throat. Job for everyone.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Chairman, I had one comment.
Sir.
Everyone is well aware of the transition that's occurred in the finance department over the last six to eight months. Hasn't been easy. Uh, I don't have to tell you, it hasn't been. The team that we have in place is really, they've rolled their sleeves up and they dove into it. And I appreciate Commissioner John Irwin's comments, but would not go without saying that, that those also need to be shared with that finance team because they have had a very difficult process in trying to tie numbers together. They have had a difficult process in trying to go back and, I'll use the word, clean up some of those past occurrences and, and this is a true reflection of what they're doing.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
One thing that I am, is rolling around in the back of my head. Whenever I first became a commissioner, we realized that the tax office was being supported by a homegrown, uh, computer program. Is there some computer, uh, program out there or some automation that we could look to in the future that would help with this process? I'm, I'm looking, we've got a request that we're going to act on in, in a little bit. We've got five-year-old computers that have got to be replaced and that's a reflection of the lack of an IT, uh, IT person that this county has. You don't know what we are in technology.
Oh, and if I may, that, that is an accurate statement. I think there, there are some additional programs, some software, some technology, some devices, some equipment. You can go on talking about it all. But one of the things that I would like to encourage as we begin this budget season is to look into an IT position because if you go around and you ask everyone who does what for who, you've got 10 fingers and you probably run out of fingers by the time that everybody's told you what different provider is helping them out. So to answer your question, I think we, there are, there, there is room for improvement. There is room for additional technology, but I do think that we should be looking at an additional staff person in that capacity as well. And that will be included in our budget conversations.
Thank you.
We can all, we can all at this board appreciate the, the manager's office and the finance office for, we all sat in here last year, you know?
Don't do it alone.
Exactly right. It's, we appreciate all of you. Okay, moving on then. Facilities update. Department of Works Director Dave Spicer. Good morning, Dave.
Good morning. Chairman and the board, I've come to, uh, let you know a few things about what's going on and through our county buildings and, and what's happening in our county. Um, as we know that the courthouse, uh, those projects are underway. Uh, the bids were opened up as far as the construction, um, as. as the construction, as renovation of the earthquake damage. So, those things is being taken care of. We're still waiting as far as the roof is concerned. The weather has hindered that somewhat in the last little bit, but that is a project that will be coming up very shortly. So, we'll get the roof on the front part of the courthouse and the earthquake damage fixed within the facility itself. So, we did, or was able to find a company that could fix the security door to the left-hand side, the door that goes back out down towards the elevator for the inmate side of it. That has been repaired and fixed and, and is in working order now. So, that's all good. The new courtroom is pretty much on schedule. So, they're hoping to have a rough-in inspection this week, so that they can carry on with the insulation and the installation of the sheet rock. Commissioner Irwin asked, John Irwin asked about the floor joists, and I told him I would research that, and I have. I talked to Colt, and I talked to the engineer at the same time last week. And those floor joists in question have been sistered, which means that there has been additional bracing and, and support for that. And the engineer was in support of that and okay with that. So, that has been taken care of. So, those floor joists are in good order now. So, they're carrying on. They have had just a little bit of delay in receiving some of the equipment that was to be put into the building, so that, but that has not put them behind schedule. So, they've been working on other things until those parts come in, and we're still, I still think we're right on schedule. So, all that should be pretty good. At our transfer facility, our staff there is working very diligently in improving our transfer facility. We are in the process of submitting a grant. The grant is almost ready to be submitted for recycling. So, with that, we're, we're putting in a grant for a compactor for recycling, so that we can co-mingle the recyclable materials that comes in, everything except for corrugated cardboard. And the corrugated cardboard, that is something that we're working towards. Re, I guess, our baler, we need to renovate that thing and get it in working order, along with some other things. So, it's just a process of being able to have funds and being able to do the things that's necessary. So, with that, we get a thirty thousand dollar grant, hopefully, from the state to assist in the purchase of the compactor with the roll-off containers. And with everything said, done, installed forty-one thousand, one hundred and two, and two dollars. So, our part of that will be eleven thousand, one hundred and two dollars. So, that's not, not a bad deal for us to continue and improve our recycling program. So, hopefully, we can obtain that. Earthquake repairs in other buildings, that's still ongoing. It, it is coming closer now than later. So, we're soon to have a lot more earthquake repairs as far as other buildings in the county, not just the courthouse, but other buildings in the county of having those repairs fixed and completed. So, that's, that's in process right now. As Daniel mentioned, the work on the campground, and if you've not been out, you should go look and see. But all that has, he said, is being completed. There was a startup. It runs as expected and is in good working order. So, hopefully, we'll be able to get those campers moved back in place soon. We have, as a department, made arrangements to make sure that the yard hydrants, the water source for those campers are insulated and have heat tape on them to prevent them from freezing, so that it can be a year-round project. So, Daymark Center, ServPro is in the process of finishing up. It's been a little bit of a lengthy process, but ServPro is soon to be completed, and then we'll move in with contractors to adjust on that. And for that, as everybody knows, the, the water line burst overhead and flooded the building, and we have been working very hard. We was in here on the weekend and the day that we were supposed to be off for Christmas on that Monday, and was able to help alleviate some of the damage that was done. So, I'm killing, got on that very, very rapidly on Sunday, and got the water turned off and, and got started in the process of removing that water. So, well, I'll keep the board informed on how that goes. But we're, we're looking at, hopefully, next week, we'll be able to have contractors in to get pricing on what it's going to cost to have that, those repairs made for all that stuff that's been taken out. So, that's all of my update. If you have any questions, I'll be certainly most happy to answer those.
Any idea when Ninety South Main will come up to repair that? Is that too premature yet?
It's a little bit premature. We're, we're going to get together and do an inspection on that building and try to move that along as, as rapidly as we can. We were hoping that some of the projects would be completed before some of the others started, but we're going to have some overlapping now. But it'll be okay. We'll, we'll get that taken care of. But as soon as we can work on Ninety South Main, we're going to see what needs to be done.
Questions?
We anticipate going back since the bid came in over, over what our insurance total was. Are we going to go back to the state and advise them where we are, try and get some more funds, is the funds there?
If I may?
Sure.
Let me respond to that. I actually had that, that written down. We're in the process now of reviewing those bids. We, we've got a bid tabulation from the engineer. We hope to have that official information to you at your next board meeting in February. But since there is a discrepancy, if, if the board remembers, I think it was back in August, maybe, I was tasked with putting together a really quick set of numbers. And as we've talked about earlier in the meeting, the cost of constructions went up over the last six to eight months. The low bid number that came back is, is roughly double what we anticipated that cost to be back in August when we submitted that money to the state. Now, Daniel actually made reference to that in his presentation. And what he and I and Drew had talked about is actually going back to the state to identify these actual costs now, and to see if we can get some additional assistance with that. Now, that is state money. This is not the insurance money that we're talking about. So, I think that through a combination of utilization of borrowed money from previous projects, state money and insurance money, I think we'll be able to figure out a way to, to make all these come together. But yes, the answer to that is we will be pursuing over the next couple of weeks, some additional alternatives to help cover this additional cost.
That's my understanding at the front roof. Part of the holdup is because it's a historical building on the historical registry.
That's correct.
People are not answering the phones, so we can't proceed. Have we found a way around that?
I, to, to make it politely, the throttle has been accelerated with the engineering company to make those comment, e- even if that requires visitation as opposed to phone call. But we, we are trying to get those answers.
Just to let the public know, Raleigh is basically shut down. Everybody's working from home. I've had two questions in, two phone calls in to the Attorney General for over six weeks. Nobody's returned a call. What the historical foundation is doing, they are not answering their phone. And since it's a historical building, there's certain things that we cannot do to that courthouse. Until the engineering company gets the answers to this, we can't do anything. So, bottom line is, whenever you start to look at your state legislatures, you need to start to pulling some strings and letting them know you're not happy with the current state government. Because whether it's COVID-19, questions from the public, they are simply at home having a good vacation, and you're paying for it. They are not missing any checks. Get off my soapbox now.
Other questions? We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the job you're doing.
Keep listening.
Excise tax update. Ms. Miranda Roop.
One minute. It's good news.
I do have good news. Back before the holiday season, I came down to Michael and just wanted to give him an idea of what the real estate is doing here. It's across the state, but Allegheny has shown a huge increase in real estate sales. We have done very well. There, if y'all have talked with any of our realtors, our attorneys, of course, they'll tell you they're probably the busiest they've been since the downfall in the economy. But I ran some of our numbers just to kind of give you an idea. And a year ago, if, back from July to December 31st of 2018, just in that first six months, my office did a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one twenty-seven, fifty-five. Of that, seventy-nine thousand, nine eighty-seven was the excise tax. Which, just to give you, if you don't know, the Registered Deeds Office gets to keep fifty-one percent of that total, forty-nine percent of it goes back to the state. So, fifty-one percent goes back into our general fund. In 2019, in that six months, we did a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eighty-two dollars and ninety cents. And of that, seventy-six thousand, eight dollars was your excise tax. Now, this year, or 2020, from July 1 to December 31st, we have done two hundred and four thousand, nine twenty-three, ten. And of that, a hundred and forty-two thousand, one twenty-four is the excise tax. And if you don't know what excise tax is, just to give a disclaimer, it is two dollars per thousand based on the purchase price that somebody buys property for. So, we get two dollars per thousand. So, last year, total, um, um, July to June, so our fiscal year, the office did two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty-one, six seventy-three, ninety. And we've already done two hundred and four. And the excise tax total last year was a hundred and thirty-three thousand, four fifty-three, which we have already exceeded. So, this morning, I thought, just to give you an idea of how much we've done since the first of January, we have gone from two hundred and four thousand dollars total income for the office to two hundred and fifteen thousand, seven seventeen, ten. And our excise tax went from one forty-two, one twenty-four to a hundred and forty-nine, one seventy-three. So, just in the few days we are into January, that's the increase we've already done. It is phenomenal what's happening, and it looks like that we are going to stay on this trend. I've talked with the attorneys and the realtors, and they're just as busy as they were prior to the holidays. Generally, January, February, March really slows down here. Real estate kind of stops. But it's not. It's, it's going as much as it has been this whole year. So, I wouldn't be surprised if we don't exceed over two hundred thousand dollars in excise tax.
That's great news.
It is.
Yeah, great news.
It's a lot of new people coming in. It's not locals buying additional property. These are people buying homes. Our real estate market is fairly slim on pickings right now of the homes and the land, but we have a lot of new builds. A lot of people putting campers or tiny homes in until they can get land to build on. But, and it's a lot of young people. I've met several of them. They've came into the office. We have people coming in every day that is looking for property or researching the property before they go and offer money on it. So, it's, it's doing really well. And it's a great thing for the community, because all of these new people coming in are, you know, possibly bring new adventures here, so.
It's a good, good numbers.
Good numbers.
It is. It is. It's a very positive thing. So, hopefully, it'll continue.
The good thing about that, it's a seller's market right now. I mean, it's the people looking to sell. It's, they can't beat the time.
It is, and it's a really great time to get mortgages, so.
Interest is cheap.
They are.
Perfect storm. Have any further questions?
No.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
You, you too. Put on down, general business. April ham, emergency. Eat sick leave.
Change hats now. Go to HR for a minute. Back in the spring, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act was actually passed at the federal level. And in that act, there was a couple of things. There was an expansion of FMLA, Family Medical Leave, and there was something called Emergency Paid Sick Leave. And it was basically provided for any employee that was put in quarantine, that had been exposed to coronavirus, or had become sick with coronavirus, or needed to take care of someone who was in quarantine or sick with coronavirus. That Emergency Paid Sick Leave expired December 31st. It is an option for us to have a local policy on Emergency Paid Sick Leave. We have had several employees that have used Emergency Paid Sick Leave. I would estimate probably thirty-five of our hundred and twenty-three full-time positions, I'd say thirty-five have used that. We do not get anything back from it. I actually, it was my understanding that we were going to get the, the small portion of the Social Security back from it. And I put in a request for the second quarter of 2020, and I got the letter back from the IRS saying we didn't qualify. It was only about four hundred and thirteen dollars, I will tell you that, of the money that we paid out for the employees to be out on Emergency Paid Sick Leave. So, we're not talking a huge amount. But I'm here this morning before the board. Michael and Drew and I had the conversation about the expansion of this and having a local policy. And we actually talked to the board, I believe it was back in late September or early October. We actually did have a local policy that we did. If someone came in sick to one of our offices, or someone came in and expressed to a supervisor that they thought they had been exposed, or they knew they had been exposed, and the supervisor asked the employee to go home, we, we expanded that Emergency Paid Sick Leave for a couple of days, here locally for employees, our employees. I'm here before you this morning to present this, to see if you would like to extend this Emergency Paid Sick Leave for employees. I think right now, at the federal level, under the current, it's called the Consolidated Appropriations Act, is what they passed a few weeks ago. That little bit of Social Security that some employers can request back, that has been expanded through the end of March, I believe, into March 1st of April. So, I'm, I'm here before you to ask if you would like to extend this.
What's the feeling of the board?
Think that we should extend it, because you don't want employees coming to work sick and infecting other employees as well as the public. This is an incentive for them to stay home and get well.
I think along the same lines, it's COVID here until we get COVID under control and taking care of our people. I think that's the right thing to do. I concur to your motion.
Thank, listening to Jennifer Green from the Health Department. You know, it's hard telling how long before the county gets, gets vaccinated. So, I think we need to just go ahead and extend it. I mean, we could be looking at a year or more.
Pertain a motion to do so.
Can I ask in the motion, can you clarify how many, are we going to do the eighty hours as it was in the original act? And are we going to do that, like, for the first quarter and then go from there? If, if we could just kind of clarify, so we can get the information out to employees.
I'll make a motion that we extend the Emergency Paid Sick Leave for eighty hours for a period of six months, when it will be reevaluated.
It's my understanding of this act, because I'm an agent, you have one lump sum of eighty hours at your disposal. hours at your disposal. It's not each year.
It is correct.
So, once you use it, then out of it? Or you can vacation, whatever you need to.
It's correct. So, just to clarify too, so the rest of the board understands, I'll, I'll put me in that. I was quarantined one time because of possible exposure, and I know I've used probably most of my 80 hours. But Commissioner Luthman is kind of explaining is that 80 hours is a one-time deal for an employee. So in those 35 that I mentioned a few minutes ago, some of them have used their total 80 hours, some of them may have just used 40 hours for a quarantine. So just, just to clarify that for the board and for employees, if you've already used that 80 hours, we're not giving you another one.
You've got 80 hours in a lifetime.
Correct. You have an 80 hours for the pandemic, basically.
I'll second that motion. When does the current expire? The current?
It expired December 31st.
So it'll start from that following day?
We can go back, and if somebody has used their own sick leave, we can credit their sick leave if they haven't.
I will modify my motion retroactive until midnight, January 1st, 2021.
And the six months will start January the 1st.
Right.
Any further discussion? We've got a motion in a second.
May I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
What about employees who have exercised their 80 hours of their one-time 80, that are still relatively new enough that they do not have the necessary accrued sick combination, vacation, et cetera? How, maybe I need direction on that. Because we may have some employees that have used their 80 hours they were granted originally, but may not have enough month service if they were to contact it again, it required a two-week period, that they may not have the time accrued to take that out of personal leave. How?
If we, just to clarify what county manager's asking, if we had a new employee, like we have a newer employee in finance, I'll use finance, and she has not accrued enough leave, so she's already used her 80 hours. So we had a quarantine, and she used her 80 hours. Then a child got sick, and she needed to stay home with the child to take care of the minor. She would not have any sick leave to continue to receive her check. How does the county want to handle that? Do we want to extend it, so no one's going without pay?
I would say that we would extend that for up to two weeks.
I would think so.
Based on accrued leave, and once that accrued leave is exhausted, it becomes leave without pay for whatever that duration is.
Well, they always have the FMLA.
Is that included in this motion?
Yes.
Is it something we need to look at? Is it something we can decide this quick?
Need some action, right? You need a...
We, we do need a decision on this, because even this morning, I got an email from a department head. We have, we have a couple more folks that are out sick.
Well, it ain't nobody control COVID. And I mean, if you, if you luck falls, that you just fell in bad luck, I mean, we don't want abuse in the program, but I think we need to extend it till, it's my thoughts.
At my place of work, we allow people to, they don't have vacation available to them yet, we let them use it ahead of time.
Yes. And we, we do advances on sick leave. Yes, we do that.
Be an answer.
Or there's a, isn't there a bank?
We do. We do have a sick leave donation bank. Yes.
So perhaps maybe the bank could come into play as well.
We definitely don't want sick employees at work.
Agree.
We got to all listen to right, Mr. Mayor.
How, how are you going to write that out?
Do you want me to review it?
We will refer to the tape.
Yes. Refer to the tape.
Okay. Everybody understands, but we'll make the motion as reflected by the minutes.
Yes. All right. I make a motion as reflected by the minutes in the tape.
Got a second over here. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? On favor, raise your hand. Four oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's about the longest motion I remember having in this place.
God, you didn't ask me to repeat it.
I was thinking about that, just to be honest with you.
You were just checking my mental acuity, yeah.
Okay, next up is the aim, ban bids.
This is the Dodge Journey Ban that the board declared surplus a couple of weeks ago. There were two bids received, and I, just for information, the higher bid is a county employee.
And the higher bid is on your screen right now, in the amount of $600.
I'd make a motion to accept the higher bid.
Is this the one where we had one bid, had a family member, separate, separate article? I will second the motion for the high bid.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? On favor, raise your hand. Four oh. Put on down, High Country Council on Government Charter Amendment.
Chairman, I, I can address that perhaps. I think in your agenda, you have copies of proposed amendments to the High Country Council on Government. I don't, I just have a couple points I'd like to, to mention, if that's okay. And as I get my right piece of paper here. Most of it is simple, just cleaning up. It's, it's, it's a change in one word to another. But I would, I'd like to point out on page eight, where it talks about, under section three, has quorum under D. And the only reason I point this out is it, it changes a quorum from 60% to 50% of the members. I don't know that that's of significant importance, but it, it's not what I would associate a quorum with. But that's, that's only my viewpoint. Next item is on page nine, which is under section five, Finance Matters. That whole section is dedicated to how the director shall prepare and submit to the Executive Board a proposed budget, how the budget shall include the share of membership dues to be borne by each participating governmental unit. And C, which is the one I really marked, was it says, upon approval of the budget by the Executive Board, governmental unit shall appropriate its share of the budget and, and supply accordingly. So why, why I mention that, again, this is nothing more than me reading paragraphs. But what that tells me is if the executive committee determines Allegheny County's rate based on its participation factor, however they do that, this, to me, and we have Heather that can either back me up or tell me to hush, this commits you to that number. So if you get into a situation like we were in this past budget year, and we had to go back and we had to reduce appropriations, to me, this locks you into whatever budget the Executive Board, how did you? We actually did go through that, because we went back and re-reduced what we call special appropriations in this existing budget. So I, I don't want to bring these up to be the thorn, but at the same time, these are points that I think need to be looked at. And where I'll finish is on page 13, which is the resolution that they are asking you to consider. And if you look down at the, one, two, three, four, fifth, whereas, it says, whereas by charter, two-thirds of the participating governmental units must approve any charter amendments. So, you know, basically that says that if two-thirds of the partners approve it, you're stuck with it. But I do think it's worth mentioning that the revamping of these bylaws changes maybe how you may look at budgets from this group in the future. And I don't know, Heather has any comments on that.
I would agree. You're losing control over how the budget is being presented or approved, and that might be a potential problem. So I, I think that's worth consideration.
It, it sounds to me like that maybe we need to table this until, till you and our General Counsel have had a chance to go through with it. Is, is that what you're asking, or do we want to vote no on this?
I don't want to speak for Heather, but I think she and I have the same mindset. I think those are the points that you, as a governing body, either need to agree with or disagree with before you consider adopting. And if you disagree with, and you vote not to approve these amendments and identify the reasoning why, then that gets sent to the Council on Government, and you're in the one-third or two-thirds portion at that point.
I'm not in favor of an outside agency telling us what we have to fund.
Further discussion?
Is the motion you're looking for to send this back to the council, to the High Country?
I believe, I believe a motion should be to adopt, and if by the majority voting against it, it's rejected.
You have two or three other concerns.
The points that I pointed out on pages eight, nine, and 13, if, if you agree with those concerns as a governing body, and I would, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I would not adopt the resolution, I would not adopt the changes to the charter. I would, I would motion not to adopt any changes to the charter or the resolution and provide a support letter to the Council on Government as to why you did not.
Using the county manager's learned words, I would make that motion not to.
Make a motion to reject. I will second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? On favor, raise your right hand. Whoa.
Think we just threw Ms. Cho into the briar patch.
And that, that appointment is the proverbial patch. It is this board's obligation to appoint a member.
Make that motion to appoint this. Motion in a second. Any discussion? On favor? Raise your hand. Any votes? Thirty-one. Motion carries. Read the mail. Tax Minister.
Goldfinger.
Here's big pocketbook.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, and your consent agenda to add the license plate agency report, that information came in this morning in the mail. So there were 1,305 transactions, zero errors, and total compensation was $3,509.99. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about the information before you.
Ms. Chairman, I have no questions in regards to the consent agenda, and we'll make the motion to approve all, and that includes the application for property tax relief on the recommendation of the Tax Department.
Motion, I hear a second. Bill secondary. Any further discussion? On favor, raise your hand. Four oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any manager's comments?
Just a couple. You have a building inspection report on page 30 of your packet. I would encourage you to, to look that over. I have a couple other comments that I'd like to make. The first one is, as the board recalls, a few months back, we, I had asked for a, for a couple members of the commissioners to participate in the solid waste portion of the RFPs that we received. We actually did that. Commissioner John Irwin, Commissioner Bill Osborne were those members. We met with Republic Services on the 15th of this month. I think we had good dialect. I think we had good communication. I think we, we learned some things, both, both he and us. As a follow-up to that, he has invited us to come down and view their facility firsthand. We're trying to line up a date for that. They also are in the recycling market, so David was also present. Drew was there, so we're trying to line up that additional visit. And then sometime over the next two-week period, we'd like to bring Republic back to talk more about the dollars and cents of the program. So that's one update. The second is, we talked about COVID a couple of times here today already, but one of the things that COVID impacted this past summer and continues to impact is our recreation sports. And, you know, last year, we, we went through the whole scenario. We didn't have a sports program. We closed the pool. We did a number of things. It is now spring, and if, and if you recognize the high school schedules, they're participating in sports. It's a little different, I guess, than what sports may have been used to been. But we've been trying to communicate, it, it's my understanding that Allegheny County is a member of the Tarheel League, if I remember that correctly. And we're in that with Watauga and Ash, and we're trying to, to move this thing along as we now begin our search for our new rec director position. But we've been reaching out, trying to see what they have in mind, because, you know, if, if we're a league, we need to be a league. So we have some, some information from over in Ash County, and it basically indicates that typically they start registration for their spring sports in February, which is right around the bend. But due to the COVID situation, we're talking about pushing those back, so they're looking at starting this league later in the spring. But I think what I'd like to do is, as we continue to move forward with, with the hiring of the new rec position, is give you guys the, the opportunity until your next meeting to think about how you want to proceed with a rec sports program in Allegheny for the upcoming year, and whether or not you're in favor of it, whether or not you're not. But I don't want to make that decision now. I want to give you time to think about that. And I think that coincides with how these other counties are, are trying to determine it as well. So if we could maybe put that on the agenda for the next meeting and talk about it a little bit as well, I think that, that will help us out. The last item that I have is, I think we had a very beneficial work session at our last one. And I like those. I, I know that the board has indicated they like those as well. Now, we talked about trying to keep it to two to, two to three items, so I would like to propose another work session, and I would like to, to throw that out maybe Thursday or Fri, the last Thursday or Friday of this month. And that way, we could have some information together maybe by your February meeting. But... We have, for at least six to eight months that I can remember, had discussions, and they've been kind of sporadic, about the location of the dispatch center. You know, we're moving forward with our EMD. We're getting the equipment through the process. But I know there's been different discussions about where to have it, if we're going to leave it where it's at, if we're going to move it, you know, and the logistics of both. You know, it's, the final product is not going to fit where it is. There's going to have to be some consideration if it remains there. And if we're going to consider that, we need to think about other options. And I've spoke with the Sheriff's Department on it as well. Nick and I had a conversation as recent as this morning about it. So I think it'd be vital to have them here at that work session as well. And while we're on that, animal control. You know, we've had, we've got a very, well, I won't say very, we've got an older animal control ordinance that, if you haven't read it, look. I know that our new attorney has read it, and we've had conversations about that as well, and we've already dealt with some situations regarding it. I'd like for us also, since we're going to have the Sheriff's Department present for the dispatch communication, I'd like for David, who his department currently handles our animal control, I'd like for him to be there and the sheriff, because I've approached them with some thoughts on that as well. And I just think that would be a good combination of items to have at your next work session. And if you agree, great, we'll make that happen. And if not, if you have other items you'd like to talk about, we'll do that. But those are the three I'll throw at you right now.
Start, I think.
I think Drew just recently sent us a proposed calendar for this year, for 2021. With everything you've just talked about, our last work session, we ran out of time to address several other issues. There'd be any interest on the board's part of having a regular work session put into that calendar agenda that Drew had. That way, it could be published one time, then we wouldn't have to go into this advertising in the paper constantly, or ever how she, the sunshine list that she has to go through. If we don't need a meeting, it's very easy to cancel it. I think for all board members, new June, July, August, February, whatever, whatever date we pick, is a two-hour work session or whatever time it takes. I don't know if that would make it more convenient for the board and for the administration.
Well, speaking for myself, you know, it's telling whenever I get a Christmas card from Mercedes-Benz because of all the car payments I make for them, with my doctor's appointments. It would help if we had something scheduled so that I could schedule my appointments around that, because I've got a conflict now with one of ours. Well, I can work around that, just if we could put it in our schedule, and if we could put that schedule on our website, let's get imaging specialists to put that on there under the calendar section.
Both of us use the VA. And if you've ever been involved at the VA, you're looking at five months or six months out to get an appointment. Well, I hate to have to cancel my appointment to the VA for a work session that sprung on us a week before. And doctor's appointments, I know Bill's worked around doctor's appointments around the scheduling with Michelle at her work. Maybe she can work that in. And there, time-wise, I think if we have that work session start at 3:00 and go to 5:00, then that helps the administration plan their day, and especially during the winter months, get home at a decent hour.
That puts a burden on Michelle, but not, the other thing that Bobby and I have to deal with, with the VA, we miss too many appointments. They take us out of the system.
I agree. I think it's a good plan, to set the whole year up, and we agree on a date.
And if everything's going along smoothly, we can cancel.
How many per month? You know, here, we're talking about having two in January.
Right.
So, but, I think it's a good idea to have it on, but how many do we want to put on there per month?
I would say, Mr. Chairman, one session per month, but this month, we've got some things that we've got to take care of.
We're going to have to float that date a little bit. I mean, if you get up in the summer, we may not have, we may not need a meeting that month, you know?
But if we plan on at least one a month, we can always add another.
Yeah, we can cancel it anytime.
Let's go for one with a definite date, you know?
I would recommend that we go ahead and schedule for that last part of this month, because we do have a few things to cover. Dispatch is on us.
Animal control needs addressing.
And animal control.
It's probably going to take some time.
If you're going to do one per month, I would ask that you consider doing it in between your first meeting and your second meeting, so that if anything of nature came about, you could identify it. If it's a vote, you could do it at your second meeting and out. In order to do that, you probably need to have it either the Monday or Tuesday of the week prior to your second meeting to allow the information to be compiled, put together, put in your board packet and out.
Yeah.
Let me ask, Ms. Michelle, is any day different for you at work to schedule? I just look at, we're on a lot of different committees, and they meet different times of the week. Mondays, for me, is usually an open day.
Same here.
I don't know about the rest of you. I would look at possibly Monday, the 25th, or, I mean, you know, this month, whatever you want. As a rule of thumb, maybe the fourth Monday of every month is...
I throw this out there. Would they be any advantage having that work session the mid-afternoon of the night of our nightly meeting? Then...
Go right into it?
We go into our meeting, but if it's something we need to do two weeks, we can bring it back up to mid-month. I'm just thinking, if you're going to be here at 6:00 for a night meeting, that we might be here at...
At 4:50.
3:30 to 5:30, or 3:00 to 5:00, whatever. That be any advantage to anybody?
Well, we know that we're setting off Monday, the first Monday of the month, anyway. Michelle, would that be a burden on you?
Only thing is that I'm on the Social Services Board, and they meet the...
They may be willing to change their meeting date, especially if they know the whole board's looking at that.
Especially if they know we're looking at the budget.
Keep in mind, 25th of this month, you have a joint meeting with the town. 4:30, I believe, is the time. So, I don't, right, I mean, we're here on that first Monday, but if they can't move their time, then I would suggest the second Monday of each month, so that you have that interval in between your first meeting and your second meeting to conduct any business that may occur.
Second Monday's fine with me.
Let's do the first if they can accommodate.
Yes.
If they can't accommodate that, we go to the second.
I'll call them today and find out.
We schedule a work session for the latter part of the month, as you suggested for this month, so that we can, working on the dispatch and animal control. If you, now, with the Blue Ridge Development Center, all parties are going to be wanting to get involved with that, and I think that should be a work session separate, because we'll probably cuss and discuss for two hours easy.
That's the case, and I'd sure like to get dispatch and animal control taken care of.
That's what I would like to get control, get going this month.
We meet the 28th of this month.
Guys, Kate.
I'm good, buddy.
Any of those Mondays is good.
This is on a Thursday for this special meeting that he's talking about.
Yeah, that's...
I know that that puts you all in a bind, working late.
28th?
On the 28th, I'll make sure of it.
And where's that meeting going to be?
At the Events Center on Memorial Park.
We can't have it in here?
The town proposed having it there.
Yeah, fifty-some people in here when the governor was here, and they want to have...
D.W.'s building over there, right? Shoe Factory. Right, what we talking about?
I object to that, because I don't believe Charlie can set it up so it can be televised. And after the comments in the paper and made it the last town meeting, I believe it needs to be televised.
Well, televised, plus we use the screen for all of the audio visual. I mean, if there is any. The video, you...
Work session. Charlie, you going to come in?
No.
Okay.
I think the work session, are we talking about the 28th, 35th?
I personally not in big favor of going there when we've got a more than adequate room here.
Town was thinking about...
Work session.
So, to keep us, when are we going to set our work session?
28th.
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 From 3:00 to 5:00.
3:00 to 5:00.
1,500 to 1,700.
Then the joint meeting?
25th.
At 4:30. If they're loca, well, I mean, what are we doing there?
Only if it can be televised. I recommend that we only go and have this joint meeting when it can be recorded and televised.
Time is...
There is an inability to do the recording and the audible at that facility. That comes straight from...
Wizarding. What's the next plan?
We then ask the town to come here? Either way...
We've been doing it here.
This needs to be worked out before, to give enough time to post wherever it's going to be. I'm not in favor of going to a place different than...
We've all been in here before. It worked out.
In the past, we've had joint sessions here, it's because the town said that we have enough room to do our social distancing.
Got same mailroom.
Yep. Can't expand it anymore, other than my waistline.
We can send an email, identifying the acceptance, but the, offer this as an alternate location and identify the inability to properly record and provide audio at the suggested location.
Tomorrow.
All I have, Mr. Chairman.
County manager comments? Ladies first.
And commissioner.
I'm sorry. County commissioner comments?
I want to take this opportunity to thank the town council and the mayor for allowing me to speak the other night and for graciously waiving the fees to the water hookup to the new courthouse facility. And I look forward to working with them in the best interest of all the citizens. All I have.
Mr. John?
I'd also like to thank the town for waiving those fees, and also for the efforts to get the water and sewer hookup at the fairgrounds. One thing I'd like to point out to the citizens of Allegheny County, right now, the last report that I have, and it's dated, I believe, about two weeks, we have 49 foster children in the county system at this time. We have lost at least one family adopted a foster child. Now, prior to this, there was only five families in this county that kept foster children. The two adoptions, if that was in one family, we're down to four. If it was two separate families, we're down to three. What does that mean? That means that foster children from this county are in North and South Carolina, from the Blue Ridge Mountains to the coast. We've discussed gasoline tax. These children have to be visited every month. Telephone long-distance charges for the Department of Social Services is a major factor also. We're talking about $600 a day in fuel charges and about $1,500 in long-distance telephone charges a month. This is a crisis that is going to be on us, and it's one that if we don't get a handle on, between the COVID and the drug situation in this county, it's going to be a continuing headache. And it, to be quite frank with you, it is a human disaster, because these are young lives that are being affected today. You have heard us start with the budget process during this meeting. The budget has come up several times. This is where you, as a public, have got to get involved. We are spending money in areas that, to me, are questionable. But if the public doesn't get involved, we're going to continue spending your money in these areas. We spent, I'm going to give you an example. The last couple of years, we have spent over $400,000 on the business, Blue Ridge Development Center. We have received not one penny from that. Oh, I can't say that. Fox Community College gives us $25 a rent a year. I don't know how much we get from the library. We have additional funds that we're going to be placing in, because we've got to get the, we've got to get that equipment room taken care of sometime this summer. This is an area that we have got to look at, we're going to be faced with. If you want us to keep on spending money in that regard, we've got several million dollars in that project. Just don't say a thing, and we will continue spending money. One of us or two of us will object. That is a minority vote. You don't like our budget, you must become involved in it. It is your money. Do get federal grants, but guess who pays that? This county cannot print money like the federal government. We get it from you. So pick up a phone, let each of us know whether you would support it or you don't. For God's sakes, let us know, participate. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Bobby?
For the county manager or VSO officer, did you have any information on that? The, for the county manager or VSO officer, did you have any information on that? That you can share with us at this time?
I got, the background checks have been conducted. The references, we've gotten most of those back. Everything appears to be in order. So hopefully, in the next week to two weeks, we should have someone in that position.
And there again, at budget time, I hope we're able to address the, the part-time and the full-time status of that person. On my weekly trip to the transfer station yesterday, the place looks very clean compared to what it can be and what it has been. I think the, the men out there that are working have done a very good job of keeping that place halfway decent with what they've got to work with. I think the, when you back in, there's now, there's getting to be a lip about four or five inches high. That's, that concerns me with, with people getting out, getting in, dunking their car and throwing trash and tripping over that. I was there the other day, and there was a disabled person trying to unload trash, and, and I don't see how he was able to do it, but it was a disaster waiting to happen. So that's a long-range plan, I think, that we're looking at to, to get the, the transfer station up, up to where it should be. That's all I have.
Thank you, Bobby. I don't have much. Just echo the same sentiment about the town waiving their fees for the hookups and the unity and the joint venture of the, the camper hookups out there. That was a good, good project, and we'll all prosper from that project, the town and the county. Just thank everybody for the job they done, and I wonder if we shouldn't, on the COVID vaccine thing, the commissioners not be emailing Senator Ballard or Congressman or Senator Ballard and Stevens to encourage, our two cents in to encourage more vaccine for Allegheny County. I mean, two hundred doses ain't too much. I mean, I don't know what you guys think of it, but it ain't much. But I, we all understand that the, the production ain't out there yet. But at the same time, the one that hauls the most, the greasy wheel gets the grease, kind of deal, you know? And I don't think we'd hurt a thing for us to, each one of us to email those folks. Anyway, that's all I have. Pardon? That's all I have. Anybody have anything else? Any comments?
A adjourned.
I hear a motion.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor? Thank y'all. Good meeting.